Okay, it's 5:39. We're gonna go ahead and call this Pawnee Business Council Special Meeting to Order. Today is September 3rd, and Councilwoman Butler has already given the invocation today for the meeting and for the food. So we're gonna move on to item number two, roll call, declaration of quorum.
Ms. Nettle?
Here.
Jordan Canuho? George Gardapi here, Carol Chapman?
Uh, she's excused this evening.
Cynthia Butler?
Here.
Donna Hare? Jean Evans?
Here.
Sammy Kimball?
Here.
Okay, we do have a quorum. Item number three, approval of agenda. Please look over the agenda. Are there any additions, deletions?
Yes, we need to make one deletion under new business. Number two, discussion interaction on memorandum of understanding with the Pawnee Seat Preservation Society, because it has not gone through ag committee yet, and I did make that request for us to schedule a meeting. So we'll have a meeting next week, and then more review.
Okay, and I do believe the MOU was sent out with our council packet this evening. Okay, can I get a, or anything else? If not, can I get a motion to approve the agenda with changes?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with changes.
Okay, I got a motion by Councilwoman Butler. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Dr. Evans. Let's call for the vote.
Jordan Canuho?
Yes.
George Gardapi, yes. Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare? Jean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
Okay, item number four, approval of minutes. Item number one, approval of Pawnee Business Council Special Meeting Minutes for July 2nd, 2024. Yes, Councilwoman Butler.
Um, yeah, there is a couple of punctuation errors that are there. I'm just being consistent with the other minutes. Secretary Gardapi, um, after invocation, there's no period. And then, um, on the Election Commission appointments, or appointment, could we add the name to the line item where it says that, uh... Hold on, let me pull it up. I apologize. Yeah, so line forty, forty-three maybe, it says, "Resolution 2435 Election Commission Clerk Reappointment of..." I'm gonna assume that that was Jessica Leading Fox, just for research later on, because sometimes it does come up whenever you do appointments, you know, when you look through the minutes, when were they appointed, what did it say, who was appointed on this resolution? If we could just do that and add that. And then I did have a comment to the council or maybe the executive office, maybe Brian can take care of it. We were presented with the Purple Heart plaque and the signs on that day. Could we get like a press release? Because I had some people ask me why those signs were up, and I told them, I guess if you don't watch the council meetings, you don't know what's going on. And so Pawnee Nation, they, tribal members, it's just tribal members. I didn't look on the website, or not on the website, but the Facebook postings, to see if we ever announced that we are a purple status reservation. So if we could do maybe like a press release saying that, maybe show the signs on where they're at, because they're at the entrances, just to kind of, and then maybe even add some stuff that we said in the proclamation, because we did do a proclamation with that as well. If we can do that. I think it was Resolution 2419. Maybe some language can go into the press release from that resolution. And that's all I have for these minutes.
Okay, so do you also want the name on the Utility Commission Community Member as well?
Yes.
Okay, that's line fifty-two. Any other changes?
I have one. Jamie, if you could just change the tense from one, um, line one twenty-third, one twenty-three, sorry, to "she mentioned," so we can stay in the same tense. One twenty-three, the next sentence, "she mentioned."
Okay.
Oh, I have one more, I'm sorry. On number eight, it says, "Approval of Resolution 2437 Pawnee Nation Watershed Enhancement Pro- Project Submission of Approval and Code of Conduct." But then when you look at number five, it also says, "Approval of Resolution 2437 Pawnee Nation Watershed Enhancement," or water, wastewater enhancement project. So those are the same resolution numbers. I don't know which one is corrected. Is that the same thing, or am I... Just needing correction on item number five and item number eight. They're identical, because the twenty-four thirty-seven says operations and maintenance, and then you go down, and at number eight says twenty-four thirty-seven is the code of conduct. For that, for those, that grant. So then, if it's forty, then the line number, or item number eight, which would be one-ten, needs to be corrected.
Did you get all those? If not, I have them marked as well. Okay, anything else? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes of July 2nd with changes.
I'll make that motion.
Got a motion by Secretary Gardapi. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilwoman Butler. No further discussion. We'll call for the vote.
Jordan Canuho?
Abstain.
George Gardapi, yes. Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare? Jean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
Okay, item number two, approval of Pawnee Business Council Special Meeting Minutes for July 16, 2024. Have any comments?
I have some comments. On line seventy-nine, could we just add Jennifer Littleson's last name?
What line?
It just, line seventy-nine?
Thank you.
It just says, "Jennifer responded," but it doesn't say Jennifer who responded. We all know, but in the future,
Right.
um, nobody's gonna know who Jennifer is, unless they go back and look, like dig, okay, who's Jennifer? Because it doesn't have her name anywhere else in the document. So, and that's all I have for this set of minutes.
Any other comments? Now, I'll entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes for July 16 with changes.
I'll make the motion.
Got a motion by Secretary Gardapi. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Councilwoman Hare. Let's call for the vote.
Jordan Canuho?
Abstain.
George Gardapi, yes. Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare? Jean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
Okay, item number three, approval of Pawnee Business Council Quarterly Meeting Minutes for August 3rd, 2024. Do you have any comments?
I do.
Yes, Councilwoman Butler?
Um, on line fourteen, there's not a period after invocation, and I just have a question, Secretary Gardapi. We're not consistent when we address the president, so are we going to do Madam President, President Nettle? Because it seems to change in every set of minutes. This one actually says President Nettle. The last one said Madam President, and I think the next set of minutes actually say Madam President. So I'd like just to be consistent on, on what we're calling you, how we're addressing people.
What's your choice? President, Madam President, Nettle?
Madam President.
Madam President.
And that's all I have. Thank you.
Any other comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the quarterly meeting minutes of August 3rd with changes.
I'll make the motion with changes.
Got a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilwoman Butler. Let's call for the vote.
Jordan Canuho?
Yes.
George Gardapi, yes. Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare? Jean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
Item number four, approval of Pawnee Business Council Special Meeting Minutes for August 8th, 2024.
I have some comments. So it, just gonna mention consistency, because in a lot of it, at the beginning, we don't mention last names. But then all throughout the ending part of the minutes, we mention last names. So on line seventy-three, and even when I read this, I was like, why is Lyle Fields commenting on, on energy projects? It just says Lyle. It just says Lyle. So Lyle Fields is exactly who I thought of when it said Lyle, and it's Lyle McVeigh who, um...
M C V Y.
Yeah, Lyle McVeigh was present to discuss the energy, or however, whatever the past tense is. He probably could have.
V E Y.
I'm not for sure how to spell his last name.
Believe it's...
V E Y?
I think it's M, M A, M A C, V E Y.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's M A C, capital V, E Y, yep.
Okay, thank you.
And then, and then the other thing is, I know that we mentioned Chris at the beginning where he gives the reports, but if we could either put Mr. McCray or Chris McCray, spell it all the way out. And that's a lot of what, um, I saw throughout this. It's just the names and the last names, or even just using, like Amy, it just says that somewhere, or what was it, line ninety-two? It said, "Chris responds, yes, going to work with Amy on reviewing, reviewing the infrastructure plan." So it said be, "Mr. McCray responds, yes, going to work with Amy Wilson on reviewing the infrastructure plan."
Amy Wilson of even.
Mm-hmm, yeah, yes, yeah.
It's important that these are very clarified, because they're historical documents. We may, they may be pulling them out in twenty years to figure out why we didn't do this or do that, so it's important that we capture.
Yes.
Now.
And same with line one twenty-five, Alex, maybe Mr. Hessinger, or Alex Hessinger. And then throughout the document, we reference Brian. So from line one fifty-three to one seventy-four, we either, we all know who Brian is, but years down the road, somebody might not. So either Mr. Kirk or Brian Kirk. And I'm, and I'm just gonna throw out these, these other ones. Line one eighty-two, Ms. Mashunkashay, because it says Ms. Mary. It should be her last name. And then lines two oh five to two twenty-five, Stacy, should be Mrs. Burns or Stacy Burns. And then again on line, I think, six twenty-five, Jennifer Littleson, I think, is what, I just put Littleson on there. And then on items number seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, and twelve, is the same as the other, whenever we do the appointments of the commissioners, even the Supreme Court Justice selection, if we did that. Did we approve that? Yes, we did. If we can mention their name on who was selected. And that's all I have for this set of minutes.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Be good with that? Any other changes? If not, entertain a motion to approve the Pawnee Business Council Special Meeting Minutes for August 8th with changes.
I'll do it. I mean, I make a motion.
Got a motion by Secretary Gardapi. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilwoman Butler. Call for the vote.
Jordan Canuho?
Um, I'll abstain.
George Gardapi, yes. Carol, uh, sorry. Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare? Jean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
Okay, item number five, approval of Pawnee Business Council Special Meeting Minutes for August twentieth, 2024. Have any changes? Look good? Hearing no changes or further discussion, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of August twentieth, 2024.
I'll make a motion with no changes.
Got a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilwoman Butler. Let's call for the vote.
Jordan Canuho?
Yes.
George Gardapi, yes. Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare? Jean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
Item number five, PBC travel report and requests. Do you have any travel requests? No requests. I have a report for the Oklahoma Intertribal Tax Association meeting that I went to on August the twenty-first. I will send you the written report. However, I'm just gonna go over the highlights, because a lot of it was discussion, and we don't want to give too, too much information in public, because there are issues that are ongoing with the state. This was held in Telequal by the, and hosted by the United Katuah Band. There were updates from the Oklahoma Turnpike Authority, which you know is continuing to go on in trying to come up with some kind of MOU to receive the information from tribes with regards to the tribal tags that are being utilized on the turnpike system. Tribal Tags LLC was there to do a presentation on the tribal tags and try to offer some alternative solutions to tags that are given or issued by tribal nations and to remain in compliance with the state. This was a private vendor, and he is actually trying to be competitive with like the GSA rates and all of that. He, he did come, come and presented some more information on that, so he did get in contact with Lyle, and they met, and he received his contact information for further research. The next one we had was National Intertribal Tax Association update, and that was given by Ms. Mary Mashunkashay. And again, a lot of that has to deal with, um, a lot of the information that's ongoing with like the MOUs for the Gaming and Motor Fuels Compact. There was some information that was sent out, also encouraging tribes to continue to update their enrollment numbers, so we can get the most return for the motor fuels, um, dollars that are sent in. As, as has been continued, you know, every year, they want tribes to reach out to the state and continue to, I don't wanna say lobby, but necessarily advocate for them to come up with a, with a new methodology, because the old formula methodology that they have used is, is old, and it was based off of the larger tribes that, that were selling fuel at the time that these motor fuel compacts came into place. It was based off of those numbers, and we were just kind of grandfathered into that. And they came up with a methodology that really wasn't in favor of smaller tribes. So again, like I said, they're wanting us to continue to push to have them come up with a better methodology for transferring funds. Back to the tribes. The next one we had was Oklahoma Legislative Interim Studies. We had a lady there that formerly worked. She was a legislator at, at the state Capitol, and she discussed interim studies requests, where tribes can go down and make a request. And what these interim studies are, are these are in-between sessions. They take on a couple of topics and do further research on some of the decisions that they've made at the Capitol. It could be, you know, something that they wanted to explore further, or if there was a decision that was made, maybe negatively, not in favor of, you know, whoever the party was, that they look and find out why it wasn't researched that way. So she just, you know, wanted to inform tribes that those were ways to, uh, utilize, I guess, the Capitol and utilize those, um, senators and, and, uh, the other staff that are down there, so they can look further into issues and maybe even utilize it as a way to educate them on native issues, should those topics be selected. But she just continued to, um, let us know that we needed to advocate, or, you know, get in touch with your representative, state representatives, so that they can find out, you know, why a certain bill was passed or why it didn't pass. So she let us know about that whole process and how that worked. Voter participation, this was given by, uh, this presentation was given by Margot Gray, and it was just to remind tribes to continue to push and to try to get your tribal enrollment to actively participate in the voting process, and the importance of it, and how it, you know, affects our political climate, especially here in Oklahoma with our native issues. The next items we had... Was we had panelists that discussed the income tax update, which is the Alicia Strobel case. I believe that's out of, uh, she's a Sacagawas member. She is, she has filed lawsuit because they have taxed her on her income tax, and she lives on tribal land, or trust land, and she works for the tribal nation. So why, you know, the IRS has had to change and wanting to try to continue to, um, you know, to me, it's, it's a case of trying to, again, infringe on sovereignty, you know? That's been a longstanding issue with, uh, not being, the state not being able to tax tribal members if they did live on the state and lived on trust land. And so we're still waiting that decision. Nothing has come down yet. Tobacco compact update, again, the compacts expire at the end of this year, twelve thirty-one twenty-four. Not really too much on that, just stated that, you know, they were continuing to work, look at ways to try to come up with some, some type of leverage to negotiate with the state on those. Same with the motor fuel compact. Again, a little bit of, uh, more information regarding the population enrollment reporting in the motor fuel compact. They were looking at other issues, how EV vehicles are going to affect those motor fuels that we receive. And also, um, they had an issue with the road tax that runs through tribal jurisdictions. Again, you know, what tribes that are further down south that have the reservations as a result of the McGirt decision, still looking at ways to try to look at that road tax, because again, you know, now since it's going through their reservation, they, they're stating that, you know, that it needs to be recalculated. It was noted that emergency vehicles that travel on the pipe paths have their fees waived, so encouraging tribal nations, if you are accumulating those tolls, that those emergency vehicle fees are waived, or those plate pay tolls. However, it's only if they're actively engaged in, in a duty. If it's just off, you know, off the duty and they're trans, or if they're traveling on the turnpike, then obviously that's not, not waived. Reported that Chickasaw and Choctaw, this, their compact is leaning towards one compact and wanting uniformity. I believe they had mentioned that there's ten tribes that have signed the compact and taken advantage of the ten-year, um, ten-year term, and the split still be in fifty-fifty. The last issue was the tribal tag issues. Uh, one, one issue that has come up that was different was, we have Senate Bill twenty thirty-five that went into effect on September first. And what that does is it pre-registers a vehicle that is being purchased from a dealership. The dealerships are required to enter this information into a system, and it pre-registers them for a state tag. So they were advising... not advising, but they were making recommendations to tribes as to how to handle that for the tribal members who are going to dealerships and purchasing new vehicles, like I said, from here on out because it did go into effect on September 1st. If you're not getting an Oklahoma state tag, the cost should not be imposed. Right now, they didn't have any information. I'm sure, I'm sure it's came out now since this has gone into effect, but they didn't have any information as to how much the cost was going to be and how all that was going to be incorporated into that process. And it doesn't state in that bill actually to, like I said, what the cost was and then who it's actually being paid to. So that information has come out. The other issue was the titles for tribal sellers. If you have a tribal vehicle and you're selling it to a non-native, the issue was how are they going to transfer that title? And once that is done and it's, and they go to the state to get their tag, who's paying the taxes on it? And so none of that was clear at the moment. Like I said, they were waiting to see how this was going to come into effect since it was just kind of, you know, presented in the end. Like I said, the effectiveness was already here. So a lot of these unknowns, I'm sure they're coming out now. They looked at, they reviewed the Mason Tree Act. I'm saying they, I'm saying these attorneys. One was from Cheyenne and Arapaho tribes. One was from the Citizen Potawatomi, United Katuah, Osage Nation Pike Stin Law. And looking at ways that tribes could, you know, try to get around or try to mitigate some of these issues before they are handed down to tribal members, like I said, that are looking at purchasing a vehicle. And I do believe our tax manager, Lyle, had presented some information to Brian. I don't know if that was disseminated or not. I know he had requested that be sent out on Facebook. I don't know. In addition to that, that probably needs to be on the website as well. Yeah. Okay. So that was completed as well. And that's what we had, or that's what I had for that meeting. Any questions? Yes, Donna.
President, Madam President, did they say anything about changing out the signs for like jurisdictional boundaries?
They didn't mention anything on that. I know that we did receive something from Department of Transportation and it was noted that they were going to change all of the signs so that they were conform. I know that, you know, Osage has had issue with it because it just states, you know, that it's that nation's property or that nation's, you know, jurisdiction. However, you know, they really had issue because it took off the word reservation from theirs. But they didn't report anything on that. I know that that, I don't know if it was a press release or something that they were doing because it wasn't only just for tribal lands. I think they were trying to, you know, come to some conformity too with like the, what is it, historic land sites and those types of things. But I'll see if I can find that and forward it back out to council. But that was kind of communicated early, early on. So I think just since it's here, I think it's kind of re-raised the issue. So. If nothing else, we'll move on to item number six, new business. Item number one, Budget Committee Recommendation A, Approval of 3413 Travel Management Grant Budget Mod Number One. Councilwoman Kimball?
Thank you. Thank you, counsel. I attended the budget meeting and facilitated that on August 30th amongst our accounting staff and Brian Kirk, our acting executive director. This is coming to us from the tribal management grant. It is in the amount of $100,000. This is year two funding of a three-year grant. So it's going directly into that line item. We have allocated it to that and I would like to make a motion to approve the second year funding on behalf of the tribal management grant, 3413.
Yes, Councilwoman Butler?
I just had a question because it says that it was, it's additional funding, right? And that it's being added to the budget, but then in the first column, there's no budget added to that column. So therefore, is it a new budget?
No, it should be the second year.
So how this is broken down, the first year, $100,000 authority is extended, so that it's still the same program. So everything has been spent for year one, so we're adding it to bill call for year two. So it makes the available balance of $100,000, $200,000. That was made by a budget committee. Originally had, it was $100,000 or equal to $200,000. But grant contract management said it'd be originally.
To separate it?
To separate it.
For accountability, yeah.
So was it given a different number? It's the same, same thing?
Yeah, same.
Same number? So we don't know to show accountability for the total $200,000 that we received?
Well, that's not the first $100,000 that we did. So we have that account. The last year.
Last year. Okay. See, that's the difference. That was last year funding. They're talking about this year funding. So I get it, okay? I get it now, now that you said that part. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Any other questions? Now I'll entertain a motion to approve 3413 Travel Management Grant Budget Mod Number One.
I think Ms. Amy made the motion. I'll second.
Thank you.
Got a motion and a second? Let's call for the vote.
Jordan Canuho?
Yes.
George Garderby, yes. Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare? Dean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes. Thank you, counsel. The next item is going to be for the DOE Grid Resiliency Grant. The amount being brought in is $261,589. This is the third allocation for this grant and we're adding this additional funding of the $261,589 to that grant and to the budget. You'll notice that on the, on the allocation for it, the majority of that is under the construction line. It's thought that we would be using the construction line item for possibly doing underground utility lines, taking everything from poles down to underground, which I'm thrilled about considering ice storms and such. So I'd like to make a motion to approve this additional funding of $261,589 for the DOE Grid Resiliency Grant from the Department of Energy. Thank you.
I'll second.
Got a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Kimball. Second by Councilwoman Butler. No discussion or any further questions? We'll call for the vote.
Jordan Canuho?
Yes.
George Garderby, yes. Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare? Dean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes. Thank you, counsel.
Madam President?
Yes.
I didn't have a question. I did not have a question on this particular budget, but I did have a question as far as the allocation of these funds. I know this is like a formula grant. How many more, I guess, disbursements do we know we'll be getting from this particular funding agency? Do you know? Or does Brian know?
Go ahead.
We're in four. It should be five, but based off of, you know, deal applies to active day before. But this is what we're looking at now. It could be up to five years and possible more after that. You know what's that?
Okay. All right. I was just curious. Thank you.
I have a, I have a question on that and I don't know if you know, but maybe you can find out because it does have the cost match requirement. Every time we get a dispersment, are we still, do we still have to provide the cost match or was that initial? Just initially, we provided a match? Is that something we could find out, you know, whether that's required every year or?
Yeah, it requires 15% of the year. So it's going to show 15%. And it's in kind or cash? Most of the calculations that we're using now is the same ends. We don't see more than cash value. But yes, we have at least submitted our grant for like the continuation of the new year. If you have that broken down, we got 15% for application.
Okay. But it is in kind. Just, just something to keep in mind, you know, especially during budget too, if you might just keep that with this budget, you know, when you do your mods and everything. I don't know. I know we were supposed to start trying to keep track of our in-kind and our cash matches in finance. I don't, I don't know how they're utilizing that or how they're doing that. So maybe that's something we can follow up on and find out. Okay. That's all the questions that I have. Anything else? Anything else, Vice President?
Nope. That was pretty much what I was wondering on that. And I appreciate that in-kind question as well. That is something to keep in mind when we look at these kind of grants.
Okay. Item number seven, open forum. Does anybody have anything for open forum announcements, events? Yes, Mr. Kirk.
Just have an announcement. September 11th at 5:30 to 7:30, Adroshe will be hosting an town hall meeting for community folks to get updates. I don't know if it's just really is some real good information that community folks. It's going to be a long meeting. It's going to be people, everybody just kind of making it in. Okay, let's just.
Thank you for that. Yes, Councilwoman Kimball?
Pardon me. And to follow up with that, Brian, is, could we get perhaps communications or the executive office to put that in the Pawnee chief as well for the, for our local communities so that they're aware of what's going on? I know that our elders don't get online typically and it's always nice to have. I would hope that we would be, you know, looking at opportunities to put into the Pawnee chief weekly. And you have to have those submitted on Monday to run on Wednesday. So if we could, you know, just have somebody put that on their tickler on Monday to put any events, you know, upcoming events into the chief or any announcements that we have, it'd be great. We have a lot of questions relative to children's cards and whatever. It's always, always good to hit those areas. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Kimball. I also would like to thank the CRD Cultural Resources Division for the event that was held this weekend. Very good event, food, you know. Would like to thank everybody, you know, from the division director all the way to the staff and then also the Cultural Resource Committee. They had a very good turnout, you know, for the dance on Sunday and I didn't get to attend on Monday, but I, you know, I heard that they had a good turnout as well. Good singing, good fellowship. It just was a really nice event. So I want to thank them. Thank the cook, Alexa and her cooks. Excellent meal. Anything else? Any announcements? Okay. Item number eight.
President Nettle?
Yes, Vice President.
We have Ella May Blackout on the line. Her hand is raised. Just wanted to acknowledge her.
Okay, Ella.
Hi, thank you. I did want to ask if Brian had an update if that town hall meeting would be livestreamed. I do understand that, well, I do want to state, you know, it is during the middle of the week. I do have a relative that is a clinical social worker and she was also interested in attending, but since it's in the middle of the week, she won't be able to attend in person. And she lives in Oklahoma. So, you know, there are individuals that have been keeping in contact, keeping updated with what's going on, taking place. I myself have been keeping up with the behavioral health facility, the progress. And Mr. Kirk, I do want to state, you know, it doesn't matter whether I live in Oklahoma, in Pawnee, or in the state, or if I live out here on the East Coast where I am. When something happens with family or friends or relatives, or we have a loss in the tribe or there's a behavioral health or mental health issue that goes on with folks and I hear about it or I'm called, I feel that grief. I feel that upset feeling. It affects me and I'm concerned. I don't have to live in Pawnee to be, for it to have an impact on me and my relatives out here, just like other relatives and people that have folks all over this nation. So I don't, you know, I'm not really too, too, I didn't really like the dismissive attitude that I've heard recently in regard to that. And I know it's just, you know, a quick run through, a couple of hours or whatever, but you're able to livestream other things and I really don't understand why you wouldn't as well do that, which is fine if it's not being livestreamed. But I did want to say that much because we have individuals that have been taking part in, in things and that have the expertise and that have the experience, the lived experience when dealing with behavioral health and mental health issues and with programming. And the, yes, they may not live in Pawnee, but that does not mean that they're not concerned for our people and for our community members. That's all I wanted to say on that. The last thing I wanted to say is I thank you guys for allocating ARPA money for the youth, for the clothing school supplies application that was presented on the 13th of last month. And I understand, you know, that funds have to be spent by November 1st, as I was told, I think. But two and a half weeks, you know, wasn't really a long time and I don't know. Well, I did see on the Facebook page, and I don't know if this was mentioned, I got, I got on the meeting too, you know, a little later than I was wanting to. So I missed a lot. But we had individuals comment that live out Northwest and in the Southwest and their schools don't start until this month. So they weren't able to apply. And I understand, you know, if they could have reached out to Stephanie Sewell beforehand. But also, one of the comments was that the application was not on the website. And I had made a comment too, because previously it was on the website last year, in previous years. You were able to go on the website and download the application and fill it out. Not everybody is on social media. Not everybody's on Facebook. That was the only place I saw it posted. You know, I don't know if it was posted anywhere else for others to see. So, you know, that was kind of a, that was a concern because regardless of the amount, whether it's $50, $75, $125, that can help individuals that may not be near resources for school supplies or for clothing and that may need assistance. Because as you know, the cost of living is not the same in all these urban areas, tribal areas, you know, rural areas that our tribal members live in. So again, you know, I know it's past the deadline was Friday, but you did have people comment that their schools don't start till this month. And so I just wanted to say that much. Thank you for your time. Thank you for Jordan. For, I know you don't always see the names and things on there. Thank you for, Jordan, for, I know you don't always see the names and things on there, Madam President, but thank you for allowing me this time. And thank you for all that you do. I do really appreciate it.
Thank you, Ella, for your comments and we will look into that, seeing what can be done to try to include, you know, whether it's live streaming, whether it's taping, maybe posting it on our YouTube channel or something. We'll, we will look into that. And then as far as the school clothing, you know, we'll get with education and see if there's any residual funds from that allocation and see what can be done for those schools that didn't start until this month. So thank you for your comments. Anything else for open forum? Anything online?
Ms. Carla, the chief commented to keep it funded, families needed and the kids feel good about it to ask tribal leaders. And that is all, the online message we have.
All right. Thank you, Carla, for your comments. Item number eight, set the next meeting date, our next.
Madam President?
Yes, Councilwoman Butler?
I did want to mention that the grandparents day dance is on Sunday, September 8th, that's just this coming Sunday. I didn't hear nobody mention it, so I just wanted to make sure everybody knew. It's coming up on Sunday.
Can we get that flyer back out too on Facebook? Share that information? Okay, anything else? If not, our next meeting date will be September the 17th at 5:30. That takes us to item number nine, adjournment. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Got a motion by Councilwoman Butler, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Secretary Gardapi. Let's call for the vote.
Jordan Canuho?
Yes.
George Gardapi, yes. Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Uh-oh.
Dean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Okay, we adjourned at 6:27 PM. Thank you all for attending this evening.
Yep, thank you all.